To thank and recognize Liz Peters along with the Key Club and the Kiwanis Club for organizing that event. It was really successful. I had a great day for it, same day as the track meet. So there's a lot of fun things going on that day. And then today, I'd like to thank and recognize Jason Fiedler, Josh Stowe, Southwest Health, the Platteville Fire Department, and the Platteville PD for putting on the mock accident that we had. Really well done. They did an outstanding job. Also, I think it was Mount City Audio. Everybody could hear everything that was going on. It was just really impactful for the students and the staff. It was, my hope is that we don't get any calls Saturday and everybody has a great time at prom and good decisions are made. And I think this was a good reminder of that. So, thank you to everybody that helped out with that.
First, again, I'm gonna follow up Jen. And the fourth, thanking Mr. Temperley, Mrs. Niles, and UWP for putting on the track meet yesterday. I mean, Monday. It was amazing to see all the students out there. We haven't done that in several years. They were excited. The fifth graders had never gotten to do it, so it was nice to allow them that opportunity again. And they really enjoyed the day. The other thing, we have a lot of field trips coming up, so there'll be a lot of communities, businesses, and things that we'll need to thank. We're adding some new things based on some of the social studies curriculum we're teaching along, and along with our new reading series we're using. Second grade just had the Grant County Sheriff's Drug Dog in today to talk to them because their unit is on community helpers. So they're talking about jobs in the community. They're having a lot of speakers come in. For social studies, third grade will be visiting for the first time our city building. And maybe, I don't know, I think they're going to the Sheriff's Department. Are they going? No.
Police Department tomorrow.
Yeah, Police Department tomorrow, because they do a big thing on government. And fourth grade, unfortunately, because of what was still in masking mandates in Dane County at the time, they were supposed to go to the Capitol. They weren't able to go to the Capitol. But they still are doing the mural walk this year and UWP farm. And then they will be going to the Mississippi River Museum because of the connection they can make with their Wisconsin history unit. So, a lot going on. And first grade just went to Papa Murphy's for the fraction pizza unit. So, lots of places.
Thanks. Jim, do you have anything?
I would like to take a moment to thank Crystal Curry. Today is School Nurses Day. And the past two-plus years, Crystal has been a very special employee for all of our students, staff, parents, community, and everyone involved.
Opportunity for public input. Do we have anybody?
Nobody signed up.
So let's move on to information and discussion items.
School Perception Facility Improvement Survey Analysis.
So we will shortly have Dr. Rob Demus from School Perceptions. He will be on the screen speaking to us. The board, out of due diligence, had asked School Perceptions to, would you please survey our community in regards to our facility improvements? So, that process has been completed. Rob will walk us through the presentation of that data. And we, as a board, if you have a question about the survey, about the numbers, by all means, Rob is our best resource. What I would like the board to refrain from doing is taking this data and then trying applying it to, well, maybe we should change, or maybe we should do this. That will come, but tonight, let's just absorb and learn and get the best data we can from Rob. Without further ado.
That's something like a lot of ado. Thank you, sir. I do, if Jordan could give me screen sharing permission, that would be great. And while that's happening, I just want to thank everybody for allowing me to present virtually tonight. I was just virtually in Peshtigo, and there are too many places across the state that are further apart than Peshtigo and Platteville. So this made my life a little bit easier tonight. So I appreciate that. We're all over the state and Midwest this time of year. Oops, let's see here. All right. So, let's get going with what you see up on your screen here. So, launching into who we are, what we do, what we don't do, and so on. I know I haven't had an opportunity to be in front of you yet. In a nutshell, this isn't our first rodeo. School Perceptions has been around for approximately 20 years. And our mission in that 20 years has never changed. And it's to help educational leaders such as yourselves do three things: gather, organize, and use data to make strategic decisions. We've conducted, probably, probably should update this, well over 10,000 staff, parent, student, and community surveys all in the name of school improvement. And we've helped more than 850 districts navigate exactly what you are doing this evening, what you've been doing over the last couple of months, and what you will be doing over the next couple of weeks and months, which is navigating the strategic planning and pre-referendum planning processes. Just very briefly about myself. Again, my name is Rob. I serve as the Research Director at School Perceptions. And prior to that, I was a high school social studies teacher down in Evansville. So what do I want to do with you tonight? I want to take you through some of the background info and survey information. So that's kind of the administration and logistics of your survey. Obviously, take you through the results and analysis of our work together. And then obviously leave time for any wrap-up or questions that you may have for me or for us moving forward. So just a reminder, in terms of process, I do like to take a moment to remind you how, what two mechanisms people had in order to fill out the survey. So households in the district were mailed a paper survey, and then they had one of two options. They could fill out the paper survey and return that directly to us at School Perceptions. You are not part of that process intentionally. We did not want you part of that process because of the name of confidentiality. We wanted that data to come back directly to us at School Perceptions. Alternatively, still confidential, somebody could take the survey online with a one-time-use code. Emphasis on one-time use. If I went in line and chose that route, as soon as I hit submit, my code expires and I can't take your survey again. That serves as our deepkeeping function so that nobody in a smaller community like yours can take the survey dozens of times and skew your data. That being said, we understand that there are multi-generational households. There are districts in which households have adults that don't always agree. So we did provide the district with some extra access codes in case somebody wanted to call and get that for that purpose. Or if they simply lost their survey, they can strictly do that as well. So, your survey window, as you know, it was in March and April of this year with a little over 1,000 respondents, which is good news, with a participation rate of 16% and a margin error of a little over 3% or so. Your total respondents is great. Typically, we see our data quiet down quite a bit after we see about 400 to 500 responses or so. And then the data doesn't change a lot, all that much. So it's good news here, and I feel confident that we can provide you both accurate and predictive data moving forward from the respondents that you saw. In terms of age, this is typically what I see. It's kind of a little bit of a broken bell curve. So if you look at everybody but 65+, you kind of start from the bottom, you go up, and then you come back down to 55 to 64. I always see a little bit of a hump in the middle. That's very common, especially at 35 to 44 in the two bars on either side, because that's prime parenting age. And that's probably a chunk of ages where a good number of your staff or other prime working people in your community. So it's not surprising that staff members and parents would be very invested in a school survey and pretty motivated to take it. But because of that reason, because of motivation and connection, I also always look at the 65+. And you are overrepresented in your survey as compared to the proportion of 65+ in your community. Now, why do I like that? I don't mind overrepresentation here because your 65+ have perfect election turnout. They always do. 65+ are like 18- to 24-year-olds down here at 1%. Your 65+ are very loyal voters. They will tell you what they think, and they're the most likely to be on a fixed income by nature of being retired. So I absolutely want to know what they think. Sometimes they're a harder group to get a hold of because of being slightly more disconnected from the school. But that wasn't the case here. So that's good. I'm happy we were a little overrepresented in that older age group. In terms of the next question, is your primary residence in the district about a 95-5 breakdown here? Why do we ask this? Because there are people who could get the survey that don't necessarily live there. Why? Because staff could commute. They would have an email address on file, but they're obviously not required to live within your school district's boundaries. Parents who open and roll into the district by definition don't live there, but they have an email address on file, so they receive the survey. Or if I have a second home in the district, I'm gonna have a mailbox, so I'll receive the survey. But the purpose of this question here, we want everybody to be able to weigh in if they have a point of contact on file. But, because some of those people could be very influential. But at the end of the day, that 5% can't vote there. The 95% are the people that control an election or a potential referendum within your school district's boundaries. So later on in the survey, we're gonna filter out those 5% because they cannot vote there, and we're gonna focus on the 95% of people who can and can control those election outcomes. We asked which municipality people live. You were dominated by two, the city and town of Platteville, and then Lima, Smelter, all the way down to a spattering of people in Paris Elk Grove as well. These two questions here are important. We want to know whether somebody is an employee of the district, and we want to know whether somebody has a child currently enrolled in school. Now, staff and parents are obviously very, very important by nature of what I said before. They're the most connected to the school community. So I really want to know what they think, and it's imperative that they're taking the survey. Because if your staff and parents aren't even motivated enough or don't care to take the survey, then we can't expect anybody else would be either. And that's not the case here. Your staff and parents are well represented in your survey. But, and this is a big caveat here, I'm not hearing only from staff and parents. And that's important, because staff and parents aren't the biggest bulk of your community. Non-parents, non-staff are, both in Platteville and any given community that we work in. Staff and parents are not the largest proportional group represented. So in summary, I want to hear from employees, and I want to hear from parents, but I don't want to only hear from parents and staff. We then asked, if you do have a school-aged child or children, what schools do they attend? So this intentionally does not add to 100%, because obviously I could have more than one kid enrolled at a school at one time. So Platteville, about 43% of people who have a kid enrolled in school have a kid there. 40% at Platteville Middle, a little over a third at Westview, and a little under a quarter at Neil Wilkins' Early Learning Center. Then, as we move forward, you are gonna see some text here that is exactly the same as what was in your survey. So some of these slides here, I'll go through a little bit quicker intentionally. We put these in to be a one-stop shop for you when you're reviewing this report later on. So it would be pretty annoying for you to have to dig up an old copy of the survey, and then you gotta wonder, was this the final copy? Or, you know, if you took it online, it's not unreasonable to expect that you recycled the other version of it already. Or, for people who chose not to take the survey in your community, in the name of transparency, they can still see what was asked if and when you post this on your website. So, it's also good for communication later on down the road. If you're kind of thinking, you know, how did we talk about that? Or, did we ask that question? Or how did we ask that question? You can simply review this report where everything will be for you. So, we talked a little bit about your mill rate trend, both relative to yourself and relative to your neighbors and the state. We talked about some of your academic achievements that you're seeing in the district with another chart. And then we talked about your potential facility projects. Again, nothing different than what was in the survey here. So we talked about the process that you began in 2021. And then we got into each project. So you're gonna see that there's a pattern of slides here that are the same for each of your buildings. So first off, we have Neil Wilkins' Early Learning Center. We disclosed how much that project would be, and the potential projects that would be done at that building. We had a nice image for each. And then we asked the question, would you support the plan to update Neil Wilkins' Early Learning Center as described above? A couple things here in this slide. So some of the similar breakdowns that I talked about before. Roughly nine in 10 of your staff members would support the plan to update Neil Wilkins, seven in 10 parents, and just about five in 10 non-parents, non-staff. Now, as I'm going through these slides, one place where I want your eyes to go almost right off the bat is the purple bar for non-parents, non-staff, for the same reason I mentioned a few minutes ago. The bulk of your community is going to lie in this chart right here. So that's always where my eyes go. That's always what I want to look at first. Again, staff and parents are important. They're very influential. Parents are about 25% of any given community, but the bulk of your community is going to be represented in the purple bar. So about five in 10 or so of non-parents, non-staff were supportive of Neil Wilkins. 36% were not. And 15% of non-parents, non-staff, we're not sure. In terms of Westview, same outline. You had some work done on this building a few years back, thanks to a previous referendum. So we're at half a million here, and talked about what would be done with the picture, and asked the same question. Nine in 10 staff members would support the plan to update Westview, about eight in 10 parents, and about six in 10 of your non-parents, non-staff. One-third of non-parents, non-staff that they would not support, and approximately 8% of your non-parents, non-staff said that they were not sure about this project. Platteville Middle, about five and a half million or so here for work at middle school. So we disclosed that cost, talked about what would be done. Again, exact same verbiage that was in your survey, included that image, and asked the same question. Would you support the plan to update the middle school as described above? Eight in 10 staff, about three-quarters of parents, and very similar to data as, very similar data as before, approximately one-half of your non-parents, non-staff would support the plan to update the middle school as it was described. Last but not least was Platteville High School. This came in at 39.1. So about three-quarters of the total project cost was encapsulated in this building and survey section here. We talked about what would be done in the four bullet points, included the image, and asked a question. Would you support the plan to update the high school as described above? About three-quarters of staff said yes. About, a little under two-thirds of your parents said yes. And now we have a little bit of a flip. So 29% of non-parents, non-staff said they would support this project. But we have reached the majority threshold for non-parents, non-staff. Again, not to beat a dead horse, but that's your most proportional group. You've now reached a little over 50% that out of the gauge are saying, no, I would not support the high school plan as it was described in the survey. And 17% of non-parents, non-staff in the purple remain unsure. So let's look at this a little bit differently. I boiled what you just saw over the past few minutes down into one slide here. So this is the priority score summary. How was the score created? In the footnote at the bottom, you can see that if I answered yes to supporting a project represented in the survey, behind the scenes, my score was given a weight of 10. If I said no, I would not support it, my score was given a weight of 1. So the median there is 5.5. So just looking at the structure of the data then, if I'm above 5.5, or if a score is above 5.5, that's a lean toward yes. If it is below 5.5, that is a lean toward no. In the right-hand column then, are what you see for priority scores for each of your buildings in terms of the order in which kids flow through. So all residents are the non-parentetical numbers. So 7.46 is the overall priority score at Neil Wilkins, 7.9 at Westview, 7.5 at Platteville Middle School, and 6.23 at the high school. So when I lump all residents together, all lean towards yes. But the instructive thing to do here would again be, let's look at the priority score for just non-parents, non-staff, being the most populous group. And their data does look a little bit different. It's still above the median. It's still above 5.5 in leaning towards yes for Neil Wilkins, Westview, and the middle school. But the one and the only, the one and only number here that you see drop below 5.5, which begins to lean toward no for not supporting a project, is the high school. And that came in at 4.11. That's the parenthetical number that you see over here on the bottom right of your screen. Then we went into funding support. So we talked about why you believe this is a good time to collect data, and that in order to fund these projects, you would need to take out a loan, or as a school district would do it, run a capital referendum to issue debt. We would talk, or we talked about in the survey then, what the impact on the mill rate would be, and that it would remain below the 1920 level. And then asked, would you support a $52 million capital referendum to fund the projects explained in this survey? So now we've put all the projects together. Everything has been totaled up, and we're at the 52 million for the whole gamut. Same breakdowns here. Staff residents, a little over three-quarters said yes. In terms of parents, a little under two-thirds said yes. And in terms of non-parents, non-staff for the entire $52 million project, 33% said yes, and 55% or a greater than majority said no. Now, one question that I always get here is, what about these people that are undecided in the middle? That's the bar that you see right smack dab in the middle here, represented at 12%. The good and bad news is that people are too nice when they take surveys, especially in the Midwest. We could use a little more New York out of people, and we don't. The reason I say that is because people, well, some people know that when they go into a voting booth, they're gonna tell you no. But it feels rude, and it feels mean to tell you that on a survey, and it feels like they shouldn't tell you that, even though you won't know who they are. So they just say, I'm undecided. What we've learned over 20 years, though, is there's a pretty common pattern that happens with undecided voters. About two-thirds of undecided voters will ultimately break toward no, and about one-third of undecided voters will ultimately break toward yes. So for non-parents, non-staff, fortunately, my math can be pretty clean here, at 12%, if I take two-thirds of 12, I'm at 8%. So now I'm at about 63% of non-parents, non-staff, the largest bulk of your community, who are not supportive of the $52 million referendum as it's described here, and about 37% that said yes. An alternative way of looking at that would be asking the same question, but weighting the support based on how these various groups are represented in the community. So staff, while being very important, and I say that as a former teacher myself, extremely important, but there's just not that many of them in relation to the entire proportion of the community, only about 1% or so. Parents, again, as I said before, are about a quarter of your community, and non-parents, non-staff at about 75%. So, of those responding definitely yes, or probably yes, as they're represented here in your community, I'm seeing a little under 41% support for the $52 million referendum, which, as you know, is below the 50% plus one that the district would need to see a referendum pass in Wisconsin. I can certainly entertain questions about that. I'm happy to. But I just do want to round out the following portion of your survey here. The following question we put on, or the questions, rather, we put on all of our surveys, and they're a quick big toe in the water of an overall satisfaction and how the district is doing. So there are four metrics that we ask questions on, on a scale of one to four. So can't be better than a four, can't be worse than a one. Poor being one, great being four. How did that look? Well, in terms of delivering a high-quality education, 87% of your respondents said that you were doing great or good on that specific metric, which is valuable. But we like to contextualize that based on comparisons. So, that puts you at the 78th percentile based on your score of 3.24. So just a reminder of a percentile. If you're at the 50th percentile, you are exactly in the middle of the data. 50% of districts would be doing better than you. 50% of districts would be doing worse. So in an ideal world, every metric would be at the 99th percentile. Here, you're at the 78th percentile. So you're doing better than 78% of other districts in terms of how your respondents believe you are doing in terms of delivering a high-quality education. You're doing better than 75% of other districts on the perception of how you manage your funds. And then two metrics that are very close to the median, but slightly below, you're at the 46th percentile in terms of how your survey takers perceive you are keeping the public informed, and at the 42nd percentile in terms of building pride in the community. The final data point then here was, on a scale of 0 to 10, how likely would you be to recommend the district to a friend or family member? So I kind of lovingly call this question the "when push comes to shove" question, because I may have things that I think Platteville is doing very well. I may have things that I think Platteville could improve on. But I, as a survey taker, at the end of the day, when push comes to shove, how likely am I to recommend you to a friend or family member? You have a score of 7.23. So first point there, you're on the right side of the fence. Five is neutrality. So in an ideal world, you'd be at a 10. So at a 7.23, you're certainly leaning towards people being willing to recommend you as opposed to not recommending you. That score of 7.23 puts you exactly in the middle. You are right smack dab in the middle of districts at the 50th percentile. A different way to look at this, relative to yourselves, would be, well, how far would I need to go down in order to reach a majority threshold of my survey respondents? And it's not too far. Or in other words, 23% of your survey respondents gave you the highest score that they could at a 10. If I take 16% at nine, I'm up to 39%. And then if I added another 18%, I'm well above majority now, and I've only gotten down to eight. That data is a lot more fun for me to present than it is when I have to get all the way down to like three or four to get majority threshold. That's a little bit of an attack the messenger situation. So you're not there, which is great. That does make my life a little bit easier. And it should make your life a lot easier as well, because people certainly are willing to recommend what it is that you're doing and how you're doing your work based on what I'm seeing here just in the 10, 9, and 8. Like, always, 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 always see a hump at five, neutrality. Reason being, some people will truly feel neutral about the work that you're doing. But we don't offer a cop-out here. We don't say, I don't know, not sure, no opinion. We force people to take a side and push them to one of the polls. Some people, though, you know, if they don't know truly, they don't want to give you a 10, they don't want to give you a zero, so they just say five. So I'm not sure I've ever presented a report with a question on here that doesn't have a little bit of an extension at five, because I think you're catching some of the people there who may not know. So, what did we learn? If held today, the $52 million plan would not be supported through a capital referendum. Therefore, a reduction in scope is needed, but a second question could be explored to allow ultimate voter decision. So you get two questions per calendar year. Based on your survey here, you don't have an operating referendum in your future for the remainder of the year. So you could have two capital-focused referendum questions on your ballot in November. You don't have to, but you could. One option to do that would be to maybe package your most urgent needs at the four schools in question number one, and then do some sort of other package in a second question, whether that's the gym, or an indoor facility, or just a gym, just an indoor facility, whatever package of products you decide as leaders and as a board, you could put that into a round two, or a second question. A couple thoughts about that. Ballots don't branch. In other words, if you have your most urgent needs in question number one, that would by nature then, and I don't want to put your words in your mouth, but if it's most urgent needs in question one, then that may very well be more important than question number two. And there's a chance that you may only do question number two if question one passes. But as a voter, I don't have to follow that pattern. I could say no and then yes. I could say no to your most urgent needs, and I could say yes, specifically if I'm especially supportive of whatever you put in number two, whether it's a gym, or the indoor facility, or what have you. It could be a no yes from a voter. I'm not saying that will happen, because most people are pretty understanding that, that, you know, your basic infrastructure updates are the most important thing. But we've seen it happen before. So there are pros and cons to having two questions. You can, you can put what seems to be most supportive in question one, and something that's slightly less supportive in question number two. And I wanted to make you aware of that option. The other thought that I have here is, the comment report isn't done yet. It always takes us a little bit longer to do the comments, because we do read through every single comment more than once. And our process there then is to, after reading those comments, identify and interpret predominant themes that are emanating from those comments. So that's our interpretive work. And then below those themes or interpretations, we will provide verbatim supporting comments. Platteville is no different than any other community here in terms of athletics. Typically, I shouldn't say typically, nearly all the time, if I, as a voter, perceive that a referendum is athletics-focused, the likelihood that it passes goes way, way down. That is not a Platteville thing. That is not a Wisconsin thing. That is a referendum thing writ large across the United States. And my question is, and I don't, I wish I had an answer to this. It's a bit of a rhetorical question, I suppose, is, even if something is not an athletics project, if I perceive it to be an athletics project as a voter, then that's all that matters. And one thing that I did here is look through your comments, and I tried to figure out, what are people talking about when they're talking about athletics versus academics? I did see that there is some improvements for what you're doing, and I thought one comment was instructive. It said, I would support some of the improvements, but not all. Which then leads me to believe, well, what is the sum, and what is the not all? If I follow my rule that athletics in general is less supportive, I did notice that most of the time, people refer to the indoor facility, even though it was called an activities facility, people write about it as if it's athletics-focused. Now, I don't know how representative the comments are, because they're not required. I'm not required to leave a comment as the survey taker, but I do think those comments add important nuance to what I'm seeing here. So I think one good thing for the board to think about over the next few weeks and months is, knowing that athletics are less supported, what is it that people perceive to be an athletics project? Is it the gym, or is it not the gym? Is it the indoor facility, or not the indoor facility? Because no matter how well this was billed in the survey, I did a quick textual analysis, and there were about 10 times in the comments that that specific element of the project was referred to as an activities or an activity center. About 30 to 35 times, that particular element of the project was referred to as an athletics or sports or athletic center. So regardless of how it's going to be used, the reading that I have for the comments is it's perceived to be specifically for athletics and not necessarily for other things. Whether that's widespread, or just contained to the people that left a comment, I don't know yet. And same thing regarding the gym. I don't know if people are seeing that as an athletics-focused project, or if they're kind of considering that as part of the core curriculum and core needs of what the high school is. Yeah, I wish I had an answer for you, but that's one thing that if I were in your chair, I would want to know. What is it that people are considering athletics or not? So let me pause there and see the questions or comments you have for us at School Perceptions. So let me pause there and see the questions or comments you have for us at School Perceptions.
So when we get the comments, will we get all the raw comments or will we get a collated amount of comments where you said you kind of get themes and things like that?
The answer is yes. So you have access, Jim right now has access to every single comment that's in the survey. There are a lot of them. I think just in one page alone, there was a little over 200. So we do want to do some of that work for you. So we, we will produce that comment report, but we'll, we'll do that interpretation. So short answer is both.
Okay.
How did the 65-plus respondents respond? Was it majority by mail?
Let's see. Could I disaggregate that? So we, I don't know that I have that readily offhand. No matter who they are, we enter their data manually so that all of it is represented electronically. So I don't think I'd be able to offer you off the top of my head how specific groups chose to respond. I can tell you that 341 total paper surveys were submitted, so around 34% actually. But of those 34, I'm not sure how many did, how, how, what, what percentage of that 341 were 65-plus?
Any other questions for Rob right, that you can think of right now? Okay.
All right, thank you, Rob. And our partnership with School Perceptions continues. This just doesn't end here. So if we have further questions that arise, other data points that I'd really like to get into that, please share them with myself. I'll share them with Rob, and then we'll come up with our best answer.
Yep, you bet. I'll be here. Jim knows how to find me, Jim knows where to find me, and be more than happy to help if, if you let it marinate and think about it, I'm more than happy to help.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Moving on to the next item, business insurance renewal.
An annual event for a school district. And like other things, we have to go out, they submit a bid. We've been a partner with Tricor EMC for quite some time, and the costs are going up. Some of the, the reasons behind that will be, oh, inflation. Also, there's a new risk for school districts that came up this year, and that's cybersecurity. Having that protected with our insurance, either through the umbrella or a specific portion, that's what this increase in cost is going to provide us. There are several documents for the board to review, going through itemized what, what's happening. This is an information discussion item with the plans of, on May 25th, having it be an action item to approve this. And if there are any questions specifically that the board would like to ask, I would gladly allow school business manager Dimitri Andrews to help with those answers.
I guess, just like with health insurance, have we shopped around on this at all or?
Normally, I, I don't believe we have. I don't believe we have. Once we have this relationship, we've stuck with this client.
Any other questions for Jim or Dimitri on business insurance renewal? All right, we'll move on to the next item, adoption of consent agenda.
We have the minutes of our previous meetings. For 5B, for 5C, we have our April financial report in which receipts totaling $1,572,704.08. Disbursements, $1,853,304.96 in all of the line items following. Letter D, we have the resignation of one of our fourth-grade teachers, Keisha King. Letter E, we have the resignation of Platteville Middle School housekeeper Shelley Knox. Letter F, we have the resignation, eighth-grade boys' track coach, Steve Owen Check. And G, we have the first reading of the last of our 600 policies.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Jen to approve the consented agenda items as presented. Any question or discussion on those? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries, need a motion and a second for the adoption of the agenda.
Prior to those motions, if I may, we do have an interested candidate for letter 7D. And the decision is being made in the near future, but it wasn't available by 7:00 PM tonight. So I'd like to table 7D.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Lisa to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries on two action items. First semester, Westview PE intern.
A longstanding practice here in the Platteville School District, a partnership with UW-Platteville with physical education interns at Westview Elementary. And we have selected Colin Johnson, so it's my recommendation to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Ben to approve the hiring of Colin Johnson as Westview Elementary FIAD intern for the first semester next year. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries, biology intern.
This is for the second semester at Platteville High School. This is something that we just started this year, and we are recommending that Anna Maramonte be approved as an intern, second semester, high school biology.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second by Lisa to approve the hiring of Anna Maramonte as biology second semester intern. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries, new hire tech ed.
With the resignation of Ed Wigman, we have an opening. And through a interview process, we would like to recommend the hiring of Josh Tabor as our new high school tech ed teacher.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Lisa to hire Josh Tabor as high school tech ed teacher for next year. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries and, if I can get a motion and a second to table item B, the staff teacher until we get somebody in place.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Betsy, second by Jen to table that item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Defeasants.
So this was an item that we agreed to at our annual meeting back in October. We had a preview of it at our last meeting with Baird Financial, the representative Kevin Mullen. And now it is up for the resolution portion of defeasance of some of our debt. A lot of those documents that are provided are, are very legal in nature, and they've been reviewed by the Griggs Law Firm, which this is their specialty. So it's been a partnership between the district, business office, Kevin Mullen at Baird Griggs, and it all comes to completion here.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Ben to approve the resolution authorizing the defeasance of a portion of the district. 1000 or $10 million general obligation, school bond, uh, school building and improvement bond is presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries, open enrollment applications.
So specifically, this is an example of one piece of open enrollment. So these families, they have new open enrollments either in or out. By taking advantage and filling out the, the correct documentation, this is a way of holding a spot next year. This number does not capture the amount of movement we have open enroll in or out. That's fluid number. We'll know a lot more of that the first day of school. This just represents those families who wanted to reserve a location, either in or out.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Lisa to approve the 2223 open enrollment applications as presented. Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will move into executive session pursuant to state statute 19.85, parent one, parent C to consider the employment promotion or compensation for the administrative contracts. This requires a roll call vote of a yes, no, or an abstention. Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Yes. And Ben?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Betsy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
We are in executive session, 7:41. Thank you.